Uh, one oh eight P M. We will begin this afternoon work session of Lake County Board of County Commissioners. One item on the agenda for this afternoon, the County Board of Equalization, C B O E, training with the assessor's office and the Board of County Commissioners. This will be led by our esteemed assessor, Mark Wadsworth. Take it away, Mark.
I think we're just, just doing this because you guys have not done the county board of equalization theory on that.
Correct.
And I just got, I just did type this little thing up for each one of you guys. It kind of just says what, in my experience, the, the commissioner says. It's usually the, the chair at the beginning of each hearing.
It's like getting right up to you.
Very similar to what you just said with all of this. You just would say the time and as the county board of equalization hearing, the account number of the property and the owner's name, address, and then the type.
Do we open like this for each individual property?
Yeah, there's sometimes there's more space in between them, so you would close the one and then we might have to sit here and wait for five minutes till soon starts again for somebody else's appeal.
Okay, do you have the option of if they're here and ready to go?
To go, yeah.
Start them early?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as they're, as long as we're ready, I guess, but we should.
Everybody's good?
Yeah, and then you, at the beginning of each one, you're really not going to be talking to us so much, but to, to explain to the petitioner, the taxpayer, how it, how it goes. You just say that they're gonna have five minutes to present their case. We'll have five minutes. And then the taxpayer can kind of maybe, you know, knock up, knock our presentation by saying this comp is no better doing, saying whatever. And then to recount, I guess, maybe something that was wrong on the assessor's presentation, that sort of thing. And then if they don't have anything, you guys can, you know, ask questions of either one or the, either one. And about the value of the property and then, then you will close the hearing or to explain to them at the end. That's on the back down the bottom. That you're not gonna make the decision right then and there. That you will have to tell the November third to send them a notice of determination on whatever you guys decide the value should be. And then if they don't, aren't happy then, they can, the further appeal process will be outlined on the, on their notice of determination. So there's, still, it's not exhausted, you know, there.
Okay, so we hear all of the petitions individually. Then after we've heard all of them, no later than November third, then we determine our decision and send them a notice via mail.
Correct, you correct them, yeah. And, you know, that, there were, in the past, they've taken notes of each case or, you know, we tell them very, especially like two thousand twenty-three, there was no possible way. Because there was five hundred of these things. That they could have come up with a decision then to just make notes and all of that stuff. And then at the close of the C B O E completely, I sat with them and they told me their determinations. And then I have to report to the state the difference from what C B O E started with, the value is right now. And then what the values or total values of the county are gonna be at the end of the C B O E. So they keep track of that. They keep track of how much we've lost in value or gained through protest for, for the assessors level too. As each step, I have to report to the state on the difference. And that's in at the end of the C B O E, what pretty much your responsibilities are that tax rule is good.
Okay, next steps, the further appeal options. Are those done between the property owner and the state or do they come back to us?
There's three different ways they can go. They can go to arbitration, which would be through the C B O E, I believe. We would hire an arbitrator, which is another appraiser, and that's, that costs. And it costs, I think they split it. I, I was the arbitrator one time for this county years ago. And I want to say that my, I was paid half and half. I think the county paid half of appraisal that I did. And taxpayer paid, I think. I need to look at that up.
Do you have a ballpark on what that, our half, what the cost to the county and the taxpayers is?
Well, it depends on the complexity of the property for sure. Vacant lot would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of six fifty total, so three hundred twenty-five. They go to the B A A, that's the Board of Assessment Appeals, and that's the method most people do. And that goes to the state level and they goes in front of a board and similar. You guys, they're all, enemy appraisal for a long time, very educated about taxation stuff. They hear those, those, and that's a, there's a fee to do it, a B A A hearing. Won't be scheduled probably till next year. But then we, we follow to the abatement type thing. What if they, if the taxpayer wins at the B A A level, then we abate the overpayment of taxes. We tax them on what I have now. And then the B A A lowers it, then you have to. But as I say, it's not, the, last time I had one of those, it was a, and most of those are, we can stipulate on those too. We can, we can come to an agreement before the B A A case. And if we come to an agreement, they'll sign a stipulation form and that'll cancel, that'll cancel the B A A.
Do we know how many we got coming up this year?
B A A?
No, uh, B O E.
C B O E, uh, do you?
There's ten as of now.
Ten?
Yeah.
That's a lot better than five hundred.
Yeah, I'm like, there's ten as of now.
How long do they have to request till?
September fifteenth.
Oh, we're coming right upon it, yes.
Yeah, we're coming, coming upon it. So it's not gonna be, we only, we had five hundred and sixty appeals. Five hundred and sixty total protests, so.
Out of that, a ten, yeah. I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's.
And some of them are, I think, protesting multiple properties. Like I know, like, for exam, example, Kyle Weed has like three different places that he wants to protest. So I don't know if that's even just part of that number or not. Like, it might just be, you know, that's three out of ten of them then with just one person.
Yeah, but it is three different properties. And I think, and I think we should do that as three different hearings.
Yeah, yeah.
On these three different properties, it's totally different from each other.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Like, try, treat it like it's a different person, even if it's the same person.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay.
And we think, what, what was, there was three different ways to come around this. I've lost it now.
All the login, like there's.
No, after they, they would say they were denied, they want to go further. There's, there's arbitration. And Board of Assessment of Appeals, that's only two. Or I think there's District Court, is one of them too, at court. But I have not seen that. And I've done, I've gone to the B A A for very expensive properties and nobody wants to pay that to go to, to District Court.
Maybe at some point, if we can just get a copy, a generic copy of what that, uh, notice looks like that we send out.
Yeah, sure.
Um, just so we know, just educational purposes.
And then, um, I done the, on the second page I gave you, this, this is some information that, you guys done, that I have to adhere to anyway for setting the values on these properties. I mean, taxpayers, they can have any reasons that they, they wanted, yeah, but like sales that happened yesterday, obviously I can't use stuff like that. So we're using, um, state statute says we use eighteen months that are prior to June thirtieth of last year. And, um, we can go back in time if we don't feel there's enough sales in that eighteen month of six-month increments. And, uh, up to five years. So if there's any sale that happens before, five years more before June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, that they, nobody can use that sale. I mean, that's what, you know, that's old. I don't anticipate somebody trying to use that, except I was defending somebody and the assessor at the time wasn't he trying to use a sale that was over five years old against the guy I was helping. In this room, I was like, four, but. But they can't do anything past five years. And for this reappraisal, I used two years, full twenty-four months prior to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. So July first of two thousand twenty-two to June thirty of two thousand twenty-four, the sales times that, that, that we use for this. There's a lot of things that go into sales analysis and, and sales confirmation. We don't use sales that were bad, um, beside, between a brother and sister, the family members, and we have to validate every transaction that comes through there, make sure it's a good arms length transaction before we put it on our sales list. There is some sales that we lose. I've talked to you guys about that before. Where somebody buys a bought, a vacant lot and they build on it right away. Because the sale was a vacant lot and our, the system doesn't track that. So it's, it really falls off my ratios when I value that property in the next year that has a house on it. Because the sale looks like it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value and it's a hundred thousand dollar lot. And that'll get, that'll knock the county out of compliance if you don't unvalidate, invalidate those sales when you're sending that file to the, to the audit. Because it'll, you know, they'll show a vacant lot that you valued two and a half times what its sale price was, and it's not reality. But I did save those value, those sales because they can be used as comparables, but they're not used for statistical analysis. That kind of thing. Because it's still a good, a lens. If it's right next to somebody that's appealing, you definitely want to look at that sale.
Right.
That's, so there's that, there is that. We will have the sales lists that we use that are available to you guys when we have a hearings. If, you know, if that comes up, you guys, well, I better find it or something that, or whatever. You guys can definitely have access to that. And then the assessment date is the first of January. This may come up. Properties are appraised on the appraisal date of June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. But they are appraised how they sit on January first. That only really comes into play when there's something that is different from, on the property from June thirtieth to January first. Like the house that's partially complete. We're gonna value it whole, but the improvement value is only at fifty percent because it was half done on the first of January. And we did probably vacant lot of Jan, June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. You can, you know, so how it sits on the first of January of each year. And the same property in that situation, the mid, the following year will be valued at a hundred percent complete. Even though on the appraisal date of June thirtieth, probably wasn't even there.
Wow, that's interesting. That's a lot to keep track of.
Yeah, oh yeah. And that's just, just the tip of that. But so they can, so people can appeal their, their, um, status or how long, how much they've done on the property on that same day. But we're pretty good about getting to the infrastructure. And we kind of, to be honest with you, when you go out there in February, you're probably looking at a house and there's five guys framing it. You probably would guess a little bit lower than what exists on the, in February because you're a month and a half late. And you just go down a step. And usually it's, it's to the taxpayers' benefit, usually on those kind of deals, when you're, when you're guessing. Guess a little low, but it's gonna be the less tax bill that they have received. Because the next year, they'll be a hundred percent complete and that kind of deal. It's, it's just, it's better, in my eyes, to err on the side of the taxpayer on those kind of things.
And it is kind of sometimes hard to prove how it sits, you know, like.
Yeah, if you're, like at the rail yard, I drive through there New Year's Day. Because I want to know what those houses, everything is on that, on the bay. You know, if this is close to town, I'd do that kind of thing, just to make sure that it's, that's perfect.
Sometimes we'll have modulars and we'll like, it'll just be a vacant lot and then the next day there's a house on it all of a sudden. So like, yes, there's stuff to keep it, you know, sometimes there's stuff to keep an eye on it.
And to get the residential weight, you have to have a foundation in place on that day. So there's none of this, well, I had a well in. There, I, and I, you know, I have this statue for that. You have to have the foundation in place on that day for the residential. Because that, that's, that's an argument sometimes it comes up. We do have three different methods of appraising property. And there's the cost approach, the market approach, and the income approach. For residential properties in the state of Colorado, you have to use the market approach of value, which is meaning comparable sales. The cost approach and the market approach, or the cost and income for residential properties in the state of Colorado for taxes, in where you're not to use those methods. They say you can consider them, but your final determination has to be the market approach, uh, and that's the word that's so stupid because everybody just says, well, can't. You can't, your final conclusion has to be from the market approach or compare sales. And, um, that's gonna pretty much hold true with vacant land valuation. I mean, sure, there's, there is a cost method to that, especially when you're doing vacant land discounting, which I have to do for subdivisions like the rail yard that have been putting in infrastructure because that costs money each year. And that kind of goes into the discounting part of it. But, but the only way to value vacant lot is comparable sales. Because how much does it cost? Well, use other people's sales to determine that. So that one, pretty much one of the same. So if you're doing a vacant lot, or somebody's, um, protested a vacant lot, it's, we're gonna use the market approach on that too. And we haven't had any commercial, um, appeals that are going to the state, to this level yet. So, but those will be done on the income approach as well. And that's how much profit for net operating, see, it's a net operating income that's capitalized at a certain rate. And that's usually the, the number that's contested is the cap rate. But, um, we probably won't get into that. I hope we don't. If we do, there'd be a commercial appraiser that'd be hired that will, uh, come and defend the value on that one. His name is Johnson. So hopefully, I, I don't think we'll have any, you never know. So those are the, kind of the approaches to value. And then finally, there's a couple of things like highest and best use that may come, may come into play, probably not. But I think if it does, I'll address that kind of, kind of thing if it does come. That's, you bring us a property, how it is going to be given the best return to, to the owner. Like if you have two, two vacant lots and they're together in a tax roll, the highest and best use is valued in those as two lots, not one. Because the, the maximum amount of profit billing or the best result of selling them would be selling one lot this way and selling one lot this way, not as a total. Because you're two, two billable lots.
Yeah.
You know, whereas if you make a, a lot that's combined and the lot one is vacated, that is going to be valued as one, one lot, one big lot. And on the time trending analysis, I did not do a time trend this year. It looked, I did an analysis, I had to, but it was really flat. So over the two years prior to June thirty of two thousand twenty-four, you analyze those sales and see if there's an appreciation or depreciation rate that should be applied to the sales to make them reflect the June thirtieth sale. And my trend line was, was real level on all of the types of analysis. I split the county up in different ways, different types of properties, level is different than twin legs, that, that kind of thing. And if you have more than thirty sales in any one of those areas, you, that's their guideline anyways. Can use the thirty sales or more to develop a time trend. And I tried, I cut it up even smaller than that, just to see if they were evident, like Panarc vacant lot. That's where most of our vacant land sales are. And it was, it was real flat. Where the time before, it was like appreciating it very fast rate. So things have really settled off during that time. And sales after that period, we won't even look at till twenty twenty-seven.
Cool.
Say we hit a, uh, big housing slump. Do, uh, valuations ever come down?
Oh, yeah.
People?
Contrary to what a lot of people think.
Yeah, I know.
Because I've seen, I've seen, you know, what, two, two, twenty.
I mean, we lived through that.
Two thousand and nine.
Yeah.
Right.
Was the reappraisal from hell.
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet. So are we gonna practice?
We can.
You ready?
You didn't bring it in?
Uh, I just have my, look at this. I didn't, uh, this is my first rodeo, guys.
Oh, cool.
So I have no idea what to expect.
Yeah, we're ready to learn.
Okay, I just printed what you typically get from us during one of the hearings. And, um, this is just kind of fictitious even really, but actually it's, well, something I put together on a property that didn't appeal.
So this would, we would get this information for each property that comes in to.
Yeah, hopefully that's the goal. So you guys can see exactly the sales that we used to, uh, to value the property. And, uh, there's, this did, of course, include the house that, the picture of the house that appealed and its information more than what's just on the grid. Because that first little column, that's all in green, it tells you where the property is and how many acres and how much the land value is and the square footage and that sort of stuff. And then the comparables are all listed there and they show an adjustment when one is made. Like for the first one, see, that house is bigger than the subject by four hundred some square feet. So that's why there's a reduction in that, that to adjust that one down because it's superior to make it reflect the same as the subject. And then the same would have to go for the garage, which that is pretty probably, or that, that is, that's too large, just to look at that. I mean, that's seventy-two thousand dollars for a garage, but that's a thirteen hundred square foot garage too. But if, if you saw the house.
Yeah.
This is.
Don't let that garage.
That, that, that garage on that house is not worth fifteen, or whatever. It is not worth seventy-two grand. This is not. I, and this is just the example that I pulled because this property stuck out when I was looking at properties about a month and a half ago. And they didn't appeal, but it was, it was overvalued. So I, I did one of these real quick and I, and I adjusted it down to four hundred. It's on there, it's like four hundred sixteen or something like that. But I think it was more. I, I did that, just let her know that. And I, I, I fixed your property even when you broke that.
Wait, so Mark, when we were talking back in like May, my understanding was that if somebody, somebody got their valuation and then they let you know that they were protesting and you were, and you'd look at it and you're like, whoa, that's wrong. And then you fixed it. You were like, they still need to send that in. They still need to, to, um.
Appeal.
Appeal, but you're already fixing it some.
That one, I, that one I did.
So we don't need to do the C B O E when, just because somebody has appealed?
No, yeah, see, the C B O E is only when they went through our appeal period and.
And then they don't agree?
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
And I think, don't get that confused with it's when somebody files an abatement.
Right.
Like this person could file in a, for an abatement next year because she didn't protest. Not have to relook at it again. And then I don't like the way, the way it's set up because it almost rewards people that don't protest. And then they want to protest off their tax bill next year. If they, if we find that the value was erroneous, and I would have a choice but to abate or refund that payment on, overpaying our taxes on the, on that year.
That's pretty wild.
Yeah, because if they do, if they do protest and we deny them at the assessor level, they don't go to the, this level. They cannot receive an abatement for the prior year, no matter what. They, you know, they've exhausted their, their, that year.
Got it. And you see how that rewards people for not.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, it's crazy. But that's the thing. So, um, do you want to do a, a mock one of them?
You're gonna be, yeah.
Fair, you want to do this.
Who's, uh, who's playing what role?
Um, I guess I should probably play the, uh, person that's arguing, you know, I.
Okay, that'll work.
You're the angry taxpayer.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and this is your house.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is my house.
I'm afraid you're reading it in here.
It's too much.
Okay, well, the time is.
See, your house is my things.
Yeah, that's good.
Your house is more tiny inside than.
Time is one thirty-one P M. The County Board of Equalization Hearing on account number R zero 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 five nine. Property owner is Golfenstein.
Oh, child, wrong one.
No, that, this isn't terrible.
No, we're just.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry, I'm reading off my thing. Sorry, Mr. Golfenstein.
You're okay.
He said your name wrong.
Address is fourteen oh seven Mount Tilapia Drive. And, whoa, hold on. I'm gonna go off this one. The address is four twenty-two Elm Street in Lake County, Colorado. The property is a single-family residence. For this hearing, the petitioner can present their case on why the assessor's value for the two thousand twenty-five tax year is not correct. The presentation will be limited to five minutes. You hear that, Mr. Goldstein? Golfenstein?
Oh, yeah.
He's a golfer. Then we will hear from the assessor's office to present their value conclusion on the property. The assessor will also have five minutes. After the assessor has presented their case, the petitioner can briefly respond to anything the assessor's information presented. And if needed or wanted, the board may ask questions of either party after the presentations. All right, from, at this time, we will now hear from the petitioner. Go ahead, Mr. Golfenstein.
All right. Hello, this is Mr. Golfenstein. Um, I have this property at four twenty-two Elm Street. Uh, and I feel like the valuation is, uh, too high. This, this house has fallen apart. They have it in as a condition average negative. And I, I feel like this should be, my house's floors are warped and I'm having all sorts of trouble. There's no way I could sell it for four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, uh, which is what they marked it down to. I'm not happy with the, with the current value that they, they have. I mean, it's a wood sill, or mud sill, ha, foundation. Uh, I just don't know where they're getting their, their numbers from. I think it's way too high. It's kind of like a lot of the notes that I get.
That's exactly what they do.
Where does it say four eighty-six?
Yeah, I see five oh nine.
Um, this was just an example.
Okay, okay, sorry. Yeah, okay, I'm just trying to get, just so I know what, look at when they're saying their numbers. It's that, is it the median indicated subject value or two thousand twenty-five notice of value?
He would be talking about the notice of determination that he got from us.
Oh, the bottom one, okay. Well, I, I'm, uh, sorry to inform you, Mr. Golfenstein, but four eighty-six is not correct. We actually had you at five oh nine. So now you're gonna be really pissed off.
Great, great.
So Mark, when it says two thousand twenty-five notice of value, is that what you sent, is that the amount that you sent in May?
Yes, in May, that's what.
And then you all, they protested and you adjusted it down to five oh nine. And now they're, they're taking us to the next step. And I'm like, it's not even worth that. If that's what we're doing, okay.
Yeah, because they'll, they'll
Great question, thank you.
Have complaints about, you know, what we decided, like, a lot, like, mu, pretty much every single one of these appeals, especially that has an improvement, um, we went out and actually inspected, updated pictures. We saw what was out there, um, you know, if we.
Do you go inside?
No, a lot of times we don't get to go inside because it is personal property and they can deny us access as part of the, uh, taxpayers' bill of rights, or bundle of rights, I think is the actual term. Uh, they can deny us access. But as far as the external, they, you know, as long as we stay within our, uh, air, you know, safety net, like, we can't be breaking into somebody's backyard or jumping over their fences or things like that. But if we can see their account, you know, we're allowed to, you know, it's a public place, you know. You, you've seen, uh, YouTubers that are videotaping in public spaces.
Yeah, yeah.
We're allowed to do the same thing.
As long as your feet are planted in public area, you can look at anything.
We can look and see what, whatever we want.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, to a degree, you know, as long as we're not breaking into their property and like going places we're, we're not supposed to go, we can get whatever evidence we want, you know, like anybody could.
How do you know if something's hot water versus forced air?
Um, a lot of times there'll be, uh, indications, uh, you know, a lot of times I prefer to look at the plans because a lot of times the plan, the building plans will actually say. But as far as forced air, you'll see vent, signs of vent, venting. And, uh, that's, that's a clear indication of forced air. That, you'll see, uh, uh, gas tanks, and propane tanks, you know, but that can also be water related. So it, that's a tricky one, you know, because there are, uh, different sayers. But for the most part, we look for certain vents and, and, uh, try to look up information on the house, uh, through plans and different things like that if possible. I mean, if they're eighteen hundred houses, it's kind of tough.
Yeah.
So we'll just have to kind of do B I A, which is best info available.
A lot of these older homes, they've sold within the last five, ten years or so.
Yeah.
That sort of thing. You look at the listing, the historical listing. Or if you don't, if you don't find it, you pretty much rely on historical data, whatever's in there.
Are heating systems valued at different levels?
They, they are, but I didn't have anything for hot water versus forced air. And I think probably is because our data's not all that great on the sales. The newer homes, it's real easy to do. They come, it comes right into the model, that's a significant number. You know, here's your, here's a percentage. It's probably a pretty low percentage over the total sale price. But it'd be a significant, because, I mean, who wouldn't buy a house with in-floor radiant heat over a forced air system? I mean, but you know, the, the newer the data, the more likely that that adjustment will come in. The C M I grid, it doesn't have an adjustment between hot water and forced air. Only here because I, that's for, I couldn't justify it on older homes.
Okay, um.
Mark.
We will hear from the assessor's office to present their value conclusion on the property.
Your CBOE says wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going over the over.
Well, we received the petitioner's uh complaints, uh valuation. I chose the four comparables I thought were the most ind- best indicator of values for the subject property. Um, if you look at the the grid that provided, all of the sales were in Leadville, just in the city limits. They are all older homes that are big, you know, original year built of uh, you know, this has adjusted on here. There, I think they were all eighteen eighty-eight homes. I generally do that. They're the original, original homes in Leadville. If it's if it's one of those homes, you want to use comps that are the same. Um, even if the adjusted year built is not eighteen eighty-eight, eighteen eighty-eight would make a house if they ever did nothing to it at all since it was built in nineteen eighty-eight, then the year built would still be eighteen eighty-eight. But obviously you have to do something or else it wouldn't be livable. Um, an economic life of a house is a has a hundred years, that's total economic life. Well, we've expired that way way long ago. Um, so we have adjusted year built because all of these homes would be, if they had done, if nobody did anything to them. So some sort of remodeling or upkeep that has had to have happened to them. So that's why they defaulted in nineteen sixty. Because you, unless you're getting into a negative value on the on the improvement, and that's just not the not the case. Um, the the grid that you guys will see will have the adjusted year built and the actual, I need at that. I thought that was on here. And then they were all seeing single-family homes. Um, I picked these because of their age. The size of their homes are real close to each other. And comparable number three is only fifty square feet difference. After the adjustments are made for the differences and the mud sill foundation obviously is a is a big, is a big thing. And no adjustment was made for the ones with mud sill. Comp four is a concrete foundation and that was a lot, a major adjustment on the upward. But the the range of values after using these comparables was four hundred thirteen thousand on the low end and up to five hundred thirty-three thousand three seventy-seven on high. Um, the median of these four sales used is five hundred nine thousand. And um, that is what we value the property at.
Yep, that makes sense to me.
There's no stipulation for how many bedrooms?
No, the reason that's that comes, doesn't really usually work when you're doing modeling is just two-bedroom homes are usually about the same size. Almost every time, you know, and you get two-bedroom, maybe it's three-bedroom, thousands of square feet usually. And if you're if you're mod- if you're doing that modeling, you're doing it all, if you have the square footage dollar, you put the bedroom in there, it's not gonna give you. Um, I I try it, of course, in it, in in this system, I don't have the same, the same tools. As multiple regression does, but that has been the findings you have usually have. And do you think there was a bedroom adjustment in in there?
Cause the reality is the more bedrooms, the more values.
Yes.
The more valuable.
But also, it's most that we can have that argument too, but if generally, they, you're gonna use a comp that has the same bedroom. That I I would, I would try to do my best in the size, when you pick those sales, like let's say West Park, eleven hundred square foot house out there. I've had, you know, I lived in it or grew up in that. If I picked those comps, they're all the same. They all have three bedrooms with that. Unless they've added something on the back of that garage. And those, that's generally, but they, I agree with you. You know, if there's two that are very similar, one is a bedroom difference, there probably should be something in it.
And why?
Some sort of adjustment.
Two of, why is two of six chestnut so undervalued and it's got all the highest metrics?
And why are these valuations less than?
Well, that's not their value.
Yeah.
Indicated subject.
That's that's their, that's what using that sale makes the subject value that.
Indicated subject value. Oh, okay, so this is based on this.
Yeah, they got.
Oh, that's how much you.
Yeah, he bought it for five hundred fifty-five thousand. His value is probably somewhere close to that what he has in the mail. I don't, I don't.
Okay, this would be, if we're basing it just solely off of that, apples to apples.
Yeah, if we used to use that sale, his value would have been four thirteen nine hundred.
Okay.
But look at the adjustment that was made for that concrete foundation.
Then you look at that at at one twenty-eight and man, they only paid three sixty-five, so now now homey's uh, now Mister Golfenstein's uh.
Yeah.
Busted up house over there is worth a whole lot more.
Right, and that it is because anything that's superior, you have to bring down to match the comparable. Anything that's inferior, you bring it up to match the comparable.
Yeah.
And that's how you get the value.
See how the square footage of that comp three is really a little bit smaller? That is a positive adjustment to that sale price.
Cause that's an inferior, you have to bring it up.
Yeah. But just seven thousand.
Look at it, it's such a nice little house.
It's so cute.
That is cute, isn't it?
Okay, too. But yeah, a lot of people, I don't feel like they fully understand the market value.
Yeah.
Um, kind of aspect, cuz they oftentimes, when we gave them access to comparables, they would pick the biggest, highest, you know, they they'd try to like pick the craziest houses and be like, oh, this is two hundred, twelve hundred square foot bigger than mine. And why is it, you know, well, we we adjust for that. So if it is twelve hundred some square feet, we take that, bring it down to the comparable, um, or the subject.
Mm-hmm.
So that's how that works.
And that's how these ones are. Yeah, their boards are bigger and that, this was pretty much kind of a toy for me. I was just playing around when I did this thing.
I'm so, it's not clicking in my head yet. I'm so sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
The subject value, can you just indicated subject value? Why, how are we, how are we making them?
So that you get this, the sale of the house is, I mean, could use cell one.
Sure.
Um, it sold for four hundred sixty-five thousand.
Right.
Using that sale, after we adjust for it's superior in size, we adjusted the sale price downwards by forty thousand. But it had no garage and so the subject is superior. We adjust that one up on a dollar per square foot of garage area. And then after you take seventy-two thousand and then minus forty-eight.
Yeah.
You get another adjustment of twenty-four thousand six oh seven.
Yeah.
So that's saying, to take four hundred sixty-five thousand, the sale price, add four twenty-four thousand six hundred and seven.
Yeah.
That is your four eighty-nine six oh seven.
I get that. I I don't understand how that helps us understand the the one protesting. Why are we? Let's go back to comparable.
Yeah.
Sale number four.
Yeah.
Why are we, are we saying that if the house that's protesting had these extra things like the concrete, like the larger living space, then it would be at four thirteen?
No, if it had all of the things like the sale four had, we wouldn't have had to adjust for the differences and it would be valued at five fifty-five.
Yeah, you'd add all the reds.
Yeah.
I understand the math, I don't understand what it's trying to say to the protester.
It's just that compared to this place.
Yeah.
This place strictly only compared to this place, that's that's the value of this place. This place compared just to this place only, that's that's what this value would be. So if we compared this place, Mister Golfenstein's check to just this place in this sale, that's what now we're gonna call it. So what they do is take all of these and come up with an average.
Well, the median.
Median indicated subject value, gave them the notice, they appealed, they brought it back down to the median. But like this just is like the apples to apples comparison. If you do each one individually, that's the number, that's how the math works out.
The medium's the middle one, the one in the middle. So like, yeah, we don't pick the high one, we don't pick the low one, we pick the one right in the center.
I guess I still don't understand why, I'm so sorry, my brain is not getting this. Why is this one, why is number four the cheapest?
Because we.
That's not his, that's not this house's value. That's still, this is, this house's assessed value.
No.
That that actually sold.
Based on this guy's stuff. Based on this right here. The all these prices are still this one. So what they've done is they've taken the one that gives them the most favorable view. And they've taken the one that gives them the the worst view and a couple, a couple more. And then they've come up with a median. So, you know, I guess any homeowner should be like, why don't you just base it off of this guy's sale and this stats and numbers? Cause it makes my house look like the marble shack it is, but it's that job to find the median.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So we're using the value add of number four to show what this protester is compared to that one.
Yeah, compared, that's why they're comparables.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're, you know, it's an appraisal is an opinion.
Yeah, and then four.
This guy got screaming deal.
Oh, for real?
It's basically what, it's basically what they're saying. So based on that, that's what, you know, that's why his number's so low.
He did, he did. Yes, he did. But it was sat close to the same size, so it's it's gonna be picked, kind of picked. But that guy did get a deal. There's no house that sells for three sixty-five that looks like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
And that could cause by more full things.
No, this is like, so what the state did was basically try to give you guys something concrete to argue back to the the uh, I don't wanna say complainers, to the uh protesters. But the way they did that is crazy complicated and makes your job a living hell.
Well, no, I developed this.
Oh, you did?
I built this shit.
Mark, this is pretty impressive, bud.
Because our Tyler system doesn't have a comparable sales approach theme, the grid, so I built this in Excel so the appraisers had something to use.
So this wasn't developed by the state? You you came up with this as as a way to say?
Yeah, and those adjustment factors came out of the of multiple regression analysis that I did, that I did on all of the sales.
Are there other assessors use this similar style?
Oh, that's where I come, yeah, everybody does. It has, you know, system that uses, yeah, everybody.
I feel like crying. I really don't get it. Okay, great.
This is how everybody does it.
And it is kind of tough to explain to some, you know, some people that are might not be as savvy cuz they're probably looking more at the sales numbers and they think that that's what we're comparing, but we're comparing every aspect as well. Not just the sales.
And there's no.
So where it says at the top, what it sold for, that's not the number we're looking at. We're looking at the square footage we're looking at, if it has a garage or not, if it, you know, the comparable.
And you're and you're taking money from that sale to adjust for the improved improvements, which is not.
Yeah.
If it's the inferiorities or deficiencies.
Yeah, so if it's inferior, like the comparable is inferior, you gotta bring it up. So like, that's why you have to add to it. Like, if it has less square footage than your subject, then you gotta bring it up. If it has more square footage, you have to bring it down. So superior, inferior.
Yeah.
I'm kind of with you, I'll say.
But you're adding, but you're adding things to it. I mean, you're subtracting, you're subtracting for the things that are good.
Or or taking.
The things that are value add to a thing. You are taking money away.
They're, well, they're not taking it. We're taking it down, we're doing, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, taking it down.
And that's, that's, yeah, because if I was, my house was compared to Kyle Welch's, that's for sale down the street. That these were to sell for one point two million dollars. My house is on one level with a finished basement, it's older, it's not as nice, right? So if I was using that as a comp, there would be a huge deduction for that quality of construction in that house compared to mine.
A huge deduction, so.
Yes.
Deduction off of his sale price.
Off of his sale price, it would be a huge deduction.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz it would be a horrible comp to use.
You'd have to reduce his finishes.
Five five hundred thousand dollars. Cause his house is so much nicer than mine in quality and the sizes. Then that would be another reduction for the size because it's probably a thousand square foot higher.
So you're trying to root it.
This line down here.
The net and the gross?
Just the indicated subject value.
Okay.
So I'm gonna use the fourth one again, so it's got the most things that are better in it. This number, four thirteen, is saying, if your house was sold to the petitioner, if your house was sold for five hundred fifty-five thousand, we would actually adjust it, cuz it doesn't have all these extra things, down to four thirteen.
Yeah, if you were to choose that sale, that's, yeah.
Just that one, yeah.
And if you, if your house sold for three hundred sixty-five thousand, based on what your house is, we would actually be raising it to five twenty-nine because that's, that's.
Yeah, but that, yeah, that's what I, like I was saying.
That's what this is trying to say.
That one of those adjustment factors is role playing into that. And that's that garage, when I said that was.
Right, right, right.
That's seventy-two grand. It shouldn't be there like that. That that's going too much.
And I remember.
I mean, garage should cost you more.
From our earlier meetings, that this is like a necessity because of where we're at. If you were on the front range, this wouldn't nearly, need to be nearly as complicated because there would be comps that would
Exactly.
Almost more closely aligned.
Well, they're in there. I would say, yeah, if you're in a kooky gutter neighborhood, but there's, you know, Jeff Jeffco's got the same thing up in Genesee Park and it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a tough, that's probably a tough pill. It's probably a hard to value there, but that would, I don't really have too much sympathy with those guys, you know? They have a lot of easy stuff to buy, too.
Yeah.
Mark, if you're sticking with me, I do think I understand.
Okay, and this this one was kind of, maybe it's just a kind of a rough example too, because.
Cool.
Great, good.
This was, this was kind of be, just playing around building this thing. This was the first thing I was doing, you know? And then I got it more dialed in before I let these guys use it.
And so when we, when these people come in and uh and we make our, when we're deliberating, do we deliberate here in front of the?
No, that, you guys are gonna do that on the front row.
And so will you help us with that or will it just be the three of us?
That's not the way, that's that's usually wrong. I don't think that's, yeah.
Is there anybody that can help us?
It doesn't seem appropriate, right?
Yeah, there is.
County attorney can help with uh, fair. Yeah, but but it's, this is a quasi judicial proceeding.
Yeah.
So they present evidence and you're acting as a judge, you know?
I see.
Go back behind, a judge doesn't take a party back behind closed doors.
Right.
Right. And yeah, yeah.
Because I can see this, this first year, we're gonna need help, you know? So I'm I'm getting my head wrapped around it too, so you're not alone, you're not alone right now.
Yeah, so it's new for me too.
So so in terms of the proceeding, yeah, the petitioner will present evidence. Then the assessor will say, well, this is why I came up with the decision. And then typically the petitioner gets a chance to rebut what the what what the person says. And then they can ask each other's questions during the testimony. And all of it should be structured, right? So this isn't a rolly chaos.
Yeah, he gave you trading wheels, so.
A chaos, all of it.
Yeah.
Are these recorded, uh, or, okay, so we could go back and review them on YouTube.
Yeah, you have to.
And then, so then at the end of the day, that's when we confer?
No.
Or do we have to confer after all of them are done?
We have to wait, we were done with all ten. Yeah. So we gotta take.
Well, I think, I think.
I thought we had it built in that we could talk about it at the end of each day.
What they, yeah, I think that's what they do. That's what they do.
Oh, okay, I thought you said we had to wait, so.
But your final decision should be.
My bad.
Okay, what they've done in the past is they, when they CBOE has done their decision.
Yeah.
They called me in here and told me which ones that they did not deny, or that they did not. They upheld the assessor's decision. That's all we, that's all we talked about. Like, they they didn't ask me, oh, well, what do you think of this house or that stuff? They had their decisions made. But that's, that was why, that's, so that's, I knew that, so I, but that's all they did was right on the day that they sent those notes to insurance now. And those values are supposed to be given to the clerk to be sent out on me. Again, that's kind of separation of the government, one of these, you know? The assessor being, you know, being the one that sets this up and does all of the stuff, cuz it shows favoritism or whatever.
Um.
So Golfenstein agrees with, actually, Mark. Mark has made the, it sounds like Mark has made the case, but Golfenstein, you agree?
Well, they have the data, you know, I wouldn't like, I'm not arguing, like.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's a lot of times, this is just a stunt value related. They're like, well, this is crazy, I pay two thousand dollars every year for this thing to not, that I only go to once a year and I don't have any plow in my yard or any of this thing. You're, they're not, so those, to me, they're just, you take it with a grain of salt or whatever, but then you try to get them back in to talking about the, ah, the property, that's what they're talking about.
So does the board have any uh more questions for either Mister Golfenstein or uh the assessor? The final decision of the board will not be completed today. The County Board of Equalization will make their determination, send out value decisions at the conclusion of all hearings for the year. And will be no later than November third. There is further options to further appeal if the decision of the board is not acceptable to the taxpayer, Mister Golfenstein. And those options are shown on the notice of determination that will be sent out. The hearing for R zero 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 five nine is now closed. The time is one fifty-eight.
Yep, that sounds good.
Boy, how is close, I put one fifty on here.
Yeah.
It's like a, okay, okay. So it's up to us how we structure this.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Right now, we haven't structured, and it looked like the schedule that we were given in our packet is actually twenty twenty-three's schedule. So we don't. So we don't have a schedule yet. Candace is on, right?
Yeah, you don't want twenty twenty-third.
Or Sandra, whoever is doing our scheduling.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, sorry, I'm exporting those uh because daily in the mornings.
Okay.
But but no, I haven't exported it yet. I will probably do that after Monday.
Okay.
Just so we make sure that all of the hearings are included in our schedule.
And right now.
Unless you want them announced, I can send them to you guys now.
It just, there could be more additional people that sign up or whatever.
I don't. Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Right now, we have it like twenty minute segments back to back, is that right?
Yes, yeah. Yes, and well, it was, it's twenty minutes, ten minute break, and then twenty minutes and.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in our ten minute break, is that when we can confer?
You guys definitely can do that.
You can, you can write your notes, you can pretty much.
Can we, it, can we have like the room cleared and then we get to talk about it then, or do we have to?
Yeah, yeah, totally, yeah, they did do that.
I agree.
Or we could definitely, yeah.
I think so too, instead of waiting.
Yeah, cause I, I'm not, just tell them what to do, but I still.
This is a small town, a third of these houses, I'm gonna be like, oh, I know that place, like I've been in there. That place is super nice. What, what are? What should I avoid when I'm thinking about that in my head? Like, oh man, they got the nicest fireplace in there. Or uh, he's got a sick mural of uh skiing palterns on his wall or whatever, you know?
I run into that all the time. Cause, you know, I've been in the lot of homes, I've had a lot of friends and I do the best I can to. Be, that's, that's something that I, I know, I should just, I value the, if I, I'm not gonna work on my friends protesting. But, cause I have, you know, I, I know too much, I'm not gonna do that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But I try to just be as, be as impartial as you possibly can.
Yeah, and I think.
And base it off of, of what we, what we present and what they do.
Yeah.
I know that's impossible, cause you have a fruit on your, your.
Yeah, like what if somebody comes in here and they're like, my homie, I took, do I like recuse myself, like?
That I don't know. See, I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, that would.
Matt, do you have any input on that?
Sorry, what?
Say someone comes in for a protest and it's like one of my good friends. Do I like recuse myself on that one?
I would probably, if it's a close friend, like, yeah.
You only need to, right?
Yeah, just, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Probably be best, you don't wanna make enemies.
Okay.
What if it's one of our enemies?
Yeah, there you go.
Well, then agree with us.
Is there any scenario where we say it should be higher?
You can, yes. Or you can say, well, the assessor's a little, you can do whatever. Any value you guys come up with is just, it's gonna stay.
Oh, yeah, I imagine it being something like, he gave you a great, he already hooked you up, like you better head on out. If you're like, with this in our hands, we're gonna jack it up even more.
Do you have a table, Mark, that shows typical valuations for a garage, six hundred per square foot? Or is it more of an art form?
Well, it's, I have my final output of the data that I built these lot from. It's not the same that's in the Tyler system, because the Tyler system doesn't act that way. It's not an additive, it's not an additive model, it's.
This is in science, we can't say the bathroom, it's a five piece bathroom, it's valued in square footage, that values it exactly at this value. The garage is a thousand square feet times two hundred. There's no way, there's no form.
Not the way that, not, if you got a Tyler, I can give it to you, but it's not built like that. It's a, it's, it's a dollar per square foot and then it's, there's this points and factor thing that I fully still don't understand. It's if you have a bathroom, it gives you a half a point. If your condition is good, it may be a two point three points. And after those points are calculated, it'll take that dollar per square foot that I assigned in, multiply it by this point thing. And that how determines the final value. But that those points are usually like, like I'm saying, like a two point two. So my dollar per square foot may show two hundred thousand dollars. When that final value got spit out of, spit out of Tyler, it's six hundred fifty thousand. It's, and I had to do that and through there, through that back door and open up these things and adjust different areas for different things. To build that, it was very confusing, it was very difficult. Multiple regression analysis is easier to figure out than that points and factor system, and that's scary.
There are different attributes too, cause there's finished, unfinished, heated area, like some of them add to your heated area, some of them don't, and then they're semi-finished, you know?
Oh, and then part of that factor was garages and extra stuff like he's talking about. I had to give like a deck outside a certain percentage of value. For the whole square footage. I mean, it would take your deck, your garage, your unfinished basement, your living area. And it's all into one, that's your gross billing in there. And I would say unfinished basement is thirty percent, so it would take, take thirty percent of that square footage and add it into the effective area. It is, is the most convoluted nightmare thing that I've ever experienced. I can't believe that, but these numbers are great. I'm not gonna be worried about my valuations being in compliance, they're, they're fine. But it was very hard to do.
But some of the interior things, like bedroom counts, things like that too, you gotta keep into account. But a lot of times we don't have access to their inside of the property, like if they refuse us access. Then some of that info is just gonna be based off of best info available or what we already have in the system.
Yeah. Well, I think the.
A lot of times I can't go in there to like count people's rooms.
I still, I think we could, that's pretty much.
Yeah. I think.
There's a more complex square footage than in this bedroom.
There's what, like forty-five hundred homes in this county, something like that?
I think it's less houses, it's more like three thousand.
Three thousand?
Yeah, then we have like two thousand vacant land, that's developed type of thing. And then we have like five thousand mining sites or partial interests of, of, you know?
Okay.
There's twenty-one, they have ten owners.
Five thousand, five thousand and eight?
Oh, there's a ton of those, yeah. And then some of them are partial interests, like you said, like some people owning like nine more.
And.
Two hundredths of energy.
I value those completely differently than probably ever before, except for the industrial mining zone.
Yeah.
You can't build on them, they were done by a dollar per acre. Bad country zone, just everything, except for that. And they're, every, the way I, that they're coded is if they have bad access, access is everything when I'm looking at those sale prices.
Yeah.
Everybody sees it all. But they have to have dirt of some sort to it, to have some sort of value that the other ones kinda sell more like an industrial army. That's how I, that's how I value it.
But I mean, out of, you know, three thousand houses and how many parts of land, you got ten people coming in. You're doing a great job.
It's.
Amazing.
Pretty good.
Amazing.
And that.
We have three thousand houses and two thousand vacant lots?
It's something like that. But they, but I'm counting all the bad country zones now too, because they, that's, they are.
Right.
Coded as vacant, vacant lot now.
Yeah.
That, if that's the case, that throws off a bunch of other math that I've got on different subjects, cause we've got something like twelve hundred vacant homes. That's being factored into our conversations and all.
Oh, well, I think that.
They had twelve hundred vacant homes, that's twenty-six percent of the housing stock.
They're, I do a report every June of out of state ownership that I have to provide to the state. I don't know if you guys would be interested in that sort of thing.
Heck, yeah.
Yeah.
Always.
Any, any numbers, numbers don't lie, I love that.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, that doesn't, you know, I could do it even out of town ownership.
I think numbers, wow.
But that doesn't mean they're being rented or anything, that stuff just says that, that, that house, that house is tax billed, it's not covered.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
If you just want the houses, not the vacants.
Well, that's an, an income approach that gets tough, because then you gotta take into account the lack of, like the vacation, the like lack of rental income.
Sounds a lot to me.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's, that's a good reason. So a lot of times like if you have like a condo and there, the, one of them sits empty. Then you gotta take into account in your income that, that there's a vacancy there. So it gets a little bit tricky. I, I, and I'm saying all this stuff fresh from a class.
But that's, yeah.
So this is all stuff that I'm, I'm learning from.
That's what they say, now shall do all residential properties on the market.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and they're, they're taxed as that too. I don't care if you have a V R B O down the street that gets rented nightly. Right next to the guy that rents monthly, right next to the guy that lives there. They're all your guests.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Yeah. Unless for some reason they have a commercial, and I think if it's rated commercial, but that's different. That's like more for hotels, I think, right?
Cause it was.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we've been.
Yeah, that's more for big building.
That's also been like one of the biggest issues about people using residential properties for commercial gain. Like Airbnb's and VRBOs, is that you're, you're taxed at different rates and you're in different like assessment.
Hmm.
Also.
Yeah.
This has been a conversation since I started. I've been ninety-nine about that.
Guys.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, cause then you're making, you're actually making an income from your property, but you're still getting the residential.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but the Delaware is taxed at twenty-seven percent.
That's right.
Yeah.
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 Um, just, I have one last question about the process. What should we expect people to come with? Like, do they come with photos? Do they just come with arguments? Like, what are some typical things?
Usually, it's, it's, some get, depends on how complex that, that they wanna get, but this is generally what you're gonna get. This is a big amount of twin legs.
And I'm also going to need copies for everybody, like of the paperwork they submitted, just so you guys have it. Sometimes they still bring it in, but I'm still gonna need copies for everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a cool idea, cause then they can kinda be prepared with what, what they're bringing to the table as far as evidence or. Yeah, that sounds like that, that'd be helpful. Cause then some of the times they'll pick different comparables and there'll be reasons why we don't use their comparables because of like maybe the adjustment factors. You know, maybe they picked all million dollar houses and their house is only a two hundred thousand dollar house. You can't, like, you know?
Yeah. Do you.
After a certain point, you can't really use those.
So do you all come in with your own packet of reasons why as well?
Mm-hmm.
And do we, do we review those before the hearing?
Yeah. Then usually, no, um, I just.
Can't, sorry, can we review?
Um, I don't, I don't know the answer for that. Every time that I've had a CPO hearing, I would give the referees that, uh.
It's just twenty minutes, it's kinda wild to like, to not have looked at anything before and then just be like, twenty minutes, please decide these people's futures for the next few years.
To, to.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
I see, uh, so, yeah. You know, I would find like maybe we can print off what we're bringing too.
That's, yeah, that's.
That's what I would love, yeah.
You know, like, cause like, most likely it'd be like a property card like this with all the square footage, like hopefully it has a sketch like this one does.
Yeah.
In your card.
You know, you can kinda go over like, you know, all the things that we're comparing and, you know? So I'm thinking that that's one thing that, uh, through, every one of our accounts will probably have the record card. Just so we can see what their exterior, you know, what, what kind of materials it's made out of, you know, it's.
Do you guys have your comparables?
Um. We can, we can do those. Uh, I think Heidi was actually adding pictures and stuff to the ones that we.
I was just kinda wondering like what.
They have, if these guys get more experience, they're more.
I also don't wanna make more work for you guys.
Crazy. No, that's not a problem, that's, that's.
If it's, if it's not a big ask, cool. If it, if, if there, if it throws a wrench in anything for you guys, definitely please be like, hey, wait.
No, it's not.
This is gonna take a lot for us and, like, just, you know?
There, there's something in statute that says prior, three days prior to any CPO hearing, if requested, the petitioner has right to. Be request the information that the assessor has.
Okay.
I feel that that's no different for you guys, that's, you know?
So that'll.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, and we would want to.
Obviously, that's not always fulfilled. Two thousand and three, when I started here, there was, I went to the hearings that day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're like, I don't know.
It's a upon request, I think.
Sure.
But I think that, that you're not asking for anything out of the ordinary.
So we can consider that's the request for all ten?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, anything that we have, like record card stuff like that's public record, you know, unless they're considered confidential.
Okay, right, yeah.
But, you know, we, we would be extra fearful if we see an account that says confidential, but as to what we say, I'm sure. But I haven't seen any accounts of protests that are confidential, so I think everything's gonna be pretty much public record.
Would those be? Would those be like law enforcement, elected officials? Are those things that would be confidential?
Those are witness, uh, protection.
Witness protection, yeah.
Uh, people that are having issues with, you know, different things, like if they recently got into a divorce or something like that.
Right.
And they, they have restraining order, they could probably get it for that.
Yeah.
You know, just so that their stalker isn't gonna get them, you know, and yeah, there's, there's several different reasons why it can be confidential.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah.
Okay. Wait. Wow, can't wait. I'm glad we did this. I really appreciate that. I'm glad I wasn't doing that.
I know, I'm, I'm excited too.
Yeah.
I'm actually really excited.
Yeah, and it's just like.
Except the monotony.
Yeah, just dive into one of these with zero prep, like, wait, what?
What is this number?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then, yeah, and if you guys do have questions, like, I mean, if, if you wanna, you know, if we can get you guys some materials and if you have questions about the materials. I, I assume you guys can reach out and come, come over and bother me, you know, maybe I can explain what a number means or, you know? Obviously, I'll try to be as non-biased as possible, you know, um, that's, that's the name of the use that game, you know? We gotta, gotta be maintaining public confidence. So, but I mean, if you do need something explained, you know, we, our office is there, you know, we can try to help, you know? Hopefully before the hearings start, start coming, maybe, you know, feel free to reach out and ask us questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Can I see your script sheet there for that hearing?
So the, the script?
Yeah.
Yeah, you do wanna doctor that up. I just did that from memory, kinda.
I gave it to you.
Okay. Yeah.
You know, they, they, they're, that they just ran it out.
Oh, never mind, I have it here.
The decisions are due by November first.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, that's where I got the third from my little calendar, my DPT. Maybe, maybe third was the month of Monday, I guess, I don't know. I'm gonna call them up. What gives, man? Trying to follow the DPT.
Yeah. Great, any other questions, comments, concerns?
No, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you guys for all your hard work.
You betcha.
Yeah, thank you, assessors.
Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Appreciate it, guys.
Absolutely.
Welcome aboard.
We'll keep bringing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Me too. Me too.
But, uh, yeah, should be exciting, and I'm, I'm pretty excited.
Do you guys care if the certification you get is in, is handwritten, wrappers on the form?
Yeah, whatever's easiest for you, dude.
It's not, it's not urgent.
All right.
Um, is there a way to get this video?
They'll be posted on our website once, uh, Sammy gets back from the.
I just figured I'd share it with Heidi since she wasn't able to attend.
Yeah.
She's our other, uh, uh, appraiser that's gonna be doing this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's just in the middle of school right now. She has a, uh, class with the appraise, uh, thing, principles or procedure, yeah, principles.
Yeah, usually forty-eight hours-ish, I think, is when they, they jump up on the YouTube channel.
Yeah. Yeah, so he's on vacation. She's on vacation when she gets back, but when she does, then she'll, she'll have some catching up to do on videos, so, but.
Oh. Yeah.
But I'd be highly, I'd be highly interested in sharing that with her, cause I think she's out this week.
Okay.
So like she's gonna be right in the thick of it, you know, so, getting kinda training.
Right, it's, right. No, Sammy's really quick about it, so, so she gets back, it'll get up.
Cool.
Well, I appreciate that. Yeah, I just figured I'd, I'd ask, just so, so Heidi can see this.
Okay.
Thank you.
See you guys.
Yeah.
End your work session.
All right, it is, uh, two fifteen P M. We will conclude today's work session of the Ray County Board of County Commissioners.